Welcome to the Towne Acton Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, April 21st, 2022 at 6:03. Everybody stand for the pledge. You just got here for the minutes Gavin. January. Yeah, they're from January. They're January. We'll give you a minute to look over the minutes.
Yeah, that was a video that just somehow got lost and then just came to our gut posted just recently.
This meeting was not the approval though of his stomach.
Uh, no, yeah, that was, it wasn't the approval. This was, he had to come back for another one after that.
I'll make a motion we approve the minutes of January 20th.
A second.
All in favor? Alright, uh, new business. Steve Goodman, 824 West Shore Drive, lot 124-0033-001. Application for greatest practical extent. And Tyler Matthews is here.
Yeah, um, we're just looking to put a 12 and a half by 21 foot addition off the south side of the existing house. And basically extend the deck in front of that addition with stairs coming down away from the water. And we are not coming any closer to the water than existing.
I hadn't filled it all out, but then you gave me a new one and I did.
I mean, you're talking like the existing? I mean, it's a poured foundation.
That's the one you're talking about?
Oh, yeah, well, we don't, just don't usually get these other permits.
Yeah, I just threw everything in there. So then, uh, there was no issue of something not being complete.
Yeah, got a little extra paperwork, huh?
Yeah.
I'm just looking through it.
The stuff we can bother you with if you want. The stuff we can bother you with if you want.
Yeah.
Right, we can try and pick that stuff up too.
Yeah, no, you can't do that. You're, you're, the, uh, front page I had filled out more, but then Tyler came in with more information and I, I had like the, um, improvements that were made on the camp in the last two years, but I'm not gonna run downstairs to grab that.
But it hasn't been substantially expanded.
Uh, no, no, it still gets its expansion. Yeah, yeah, we've done, we doubled that.
We redid the deck last year, but same size, same location with the permit.
You gonna add more to the deck? Is that what I heard?
Yeah, and that, uh, one of them shows the deck just coming over in front of the, the new place.
Yeah, that one.
What's the setback from the property line on the side?
10 feet. So it's, it's a non-conforming lot. So you got, um, 10 feet from the sides and 50 feet from the center of the road.
And so I presume it meets it?
Yeah, like 50 plus feet away.
Closest one here to the, to the town hall. He's, um, in one of the drawings. So you can see he's installing gutters on the new addition to eliminate some of the stormwater running towards the lake and pushing it off the side. The septic is on, is on the back corner opposite of the new addition, um, behind the house.
Say that again?
The septic is, I mean, it's behind the house on the, if you're looking from the lake, it's on the right-hand back corner. It's included, I included the old septic design on the last page, so you could see where that was.
Is there a new septic design?
Uh, no, it doesn't need a new, if it's, it doesn't require, there's no, if there's not failing or anything like that.
Is it 30 years old?
1989. Is when it was designed.
31.
What kind of a?
Stone and pipe.
Is it a tank?
The tank?
Thousand.
Thousand gallons.
Did I miss, did you say what the addition is for?
I did not.
Is it a bedroom or?
Nope. It's actually a dining room, but. And an entry.
Are there, are there stairs down to the water from the existing deck now?
On the opposite side of the deck, on the opposite side of where I'm going out, there's existing stairs, yes.
What do they look like?
I don't know if I can, working on it.
Can't really see it that well, but there's some, that's some stairs from the deck right now. That's, he's gonna build the addition off of this side. Am I correct Tyler?
Yep.
Um, right here, he's gonna extend this deck just a little bit more. Obviously, that's a diff, that's the same camp, but, uh, it wasn't. So that's, that's all I have on the O'Donnell's.
Go back to the picture with the steps.
Sure.
So those going away, cause.
Yep.
It's gonna come now off the end of the.
It'll be just like that, but put the addition on and then put the stairs right on the outside of those.
And the deck comes out to that point.
What's the, uh, front yard, the lakeside look like there? From you got the first picture, didn't you?
Yeah, we'll go back to that picture.
Yep.
I think I got a bunch of, you sent me a bunch of pictures. Did you send?
Sent you some, yeah. Email. It's, it's a, like a walkout under the deck.
And there's some peavers down below or?
Uh, it looks like stepping stones. I mean, that's a, I don't even know, I don't even think that existing right, exists right now.
Oh, really? That's, how about the stairwell stairs?
Yeah, they have like a wall and then with stairs going down. But I'm not proposing to do anything with that. No, different job.
So there's a retaining.
I emailed him to.
Retaining wall right there.
Yeah.
That's why I was just wondering how steep it was down to the water.
Is this going from a seasonal residence to a full-time residence?
Uh, no plan to, no.
You resend them to me. I put them in a folder.
I'm doing that already.
I put them in a folder that I can't access on this computer.
And there's been no additions previous?
Correct.
Other picture must've been when they replaced the deck.
Yeah. If you give me a second, I have some more pictures, but I put them in a folder that I can't access on this one. So just.
You cutting five trees down?
Whatever that permit says, I don't know, it's four or five.
How come? Just curious.
Um, the ones that are, that show right in front of the new addition, um, just are in the way. They need to go. And then there's one over the side where there's grading issues. Everything kind of pitches to the house.
That must be the number two on the grid.
Yeah, hold on. Grid one.
Grid one, okay.
That needs to go just to be able to keep water away from the house and get everything graded the right way. But it's pretty wooded over there anyway. It's not like, I'm not clear cutting it by any means. Did you get them yet or not?
Four, four trees to me.
I think five.
Five.
Well, we got the circles without the X and.
If you got that in black and white, then you're not gonna be able to tell what goes, what doesn't. Do you have them in black and white?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's color coded.
You guys can take that up with the town and tell them to start paying for the coloring.
I can give it back if you covet the.
I was just showing the trees in the area and the, the remaining ones and.
So the ones with numbers, one, two and three. Those are going.
Some have X's, some have numbers. He's wondering which, which is which.
Which ones are which here. X is four points.
So there's a grid plan that goes with it. So grid.
Oh, those are the grid numbers.
Which got a number.
Scan one.
There's no trees going.
Really doesn't even matter. Honestly.
Oh, alright, now it is color coded.
Yeah.
Alright, here's some different pictures for you guys.
Yeah, black and white, that'll be tough to tell.
You just got your grid numbers mixed up. If that's grid one, it's showing three X's.
Right, but some of the X's are for remaining and some are for removed. It's kind of confusing that way.
Yeah, it's not cut, like he said, it's not, it's supposed to be in color.
Some of that driveway coming up?
Um, yes, a little bit of it will be, yeah.
Don't the maps show the driveway, huh?
No. Uh, no.
But your, your lot coverage is.
Shows the driveway, yeah.
Is well, well within your limits there.
Yep.
Is there a drainage ditch between the lots? There's a vacant lot and, and the house lot. Is there a drainage ditch there? I was looking at the disseptic design. It says pipe. Is that a drainage ditch?
I have to get it, it's iron pipes, that's why.
Okay.
Alright, those three that are grouped there. So the one by the deck is coming down, said?
Yeah.
The one out front of it?
Yeah.
All three of those, one, two, three right there.
Yeah.
Replanting will be done.
Pretty barren out there.
Those are the stairs coming out Tyler?
What, these ones?
Uh, no, go back to the other picture.
The ones on maybe even the next lot over or something.
No, not the other picture.
Those stairs right there.
Right.
Um.
Your regrading process.
Tough to tell on that picture. I don't believe they're coming out, but.
Those are just X's from the driveway directly to the lake.
Yeah, and they're not very safe either. They're old and all different and.
It doesn't really look like water going down in there. All the leaves and.
The whole driveway is pitched to the house. It's done very poorly.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, it's not pitched to the lake again.
Is there a picture to the left of the house? It seems to be like the right side facing the lake. Is there one on the left side?
No, I didn't take them of all sides. I just figured the addition side is what you needed, but.
So the reason, if you guys aren't familiar, some of you might not be familiar, the reason why he's here isn't because, it's because anytime you put a foundation in the ground, it requires them to come in front of the planning board, um, for the greatest practical extent. So that's just, that's why we're here at this point. Um, we've gone through, Tyler and I have gone through the file, um, verified that the expansion has not been used, um, and all that other stuff, um, so.
I'll make a motion. We approve the greatest practical extent application, um, for Steve Goodman at 824 West Shore Drive. What is that? 124 Tac 033 Tac 001. Anyone want a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Like to add the number from the lake. Happy that the condition is located no closer than 37. What is that? 37 feet, two inches?
Yes.
So no, no closer than 37 feet to the lake. Would be happy to add that as a condition?
Is it the deck or is it the house?
That's the deck.
And that's the closest point on the deck. Yeah, we can. Then I have to.
No, I think we approved your motion with conditions.
That doesn't have to be part of the motion?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Oh, you want it to be part of the motion?
Yeah.
Alright, maybe it does.
Alright, how do I undo that, Mr. Chairman?
Rescind it.
Uh, okay, I move the approval motion just made, uh, by myself be rescinded. Or, yeah, rescinded.
A second?
All in favor?
Sorry, guys.
That's alright.
Alright.
It's something we usually do too.
Want me to make this do it through?
Yeah, go ahead.
Alright. Try this again. I'll make a motion. We approve the application for greatest practical extent for Steve Goodman, 824 West Shore Drive. That the deck addition and existing structure being located no closer than 37 feet from the high water mark.
Do I have the two inches in there too?
They can have the two inches.
Alright.
A second?
Alright. Second, all in favor? All opposed? As if the number was different on the second time around.
Take it as a win.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming in. Uh, next up is Camp East Shore Drive LLC, 14 East Shore Drive, Lot 147-048, application for conditional use for Camp Kida.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi. Nice to meet everyone. This is my sister and I's first planning board meeting, so hopefully we don't mess up, but we did bring a professional. My name is Morgan Mosher and this is my sister Sydney.
Hello.
We are the co-founders of Camp Kida, um, and we just wanted to do a quick little introduction of what Camp Kida is. Um, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit summer bereavement camp for kids who have lost a loved one to suicide. We were founded 10 years ago by my brother, sister and I, um, and historically we have rented facilities all over the state of Maine. Um, we have a very unique program where we bring a community of lost survivors together with adult suicide survivors where we teach them coping skills and learn, we bring in some therapy as well as the wonderful world of nature and just regular summer camp and a chance for them to be kids and meet kids that have been through something similar to what they've been through. Um, we lost our dad to suicide and didn't have anything like this and really as we grew up, realized that there is a big community of lost survivors that really needed a place to come together, learn from each other, learn just to heal and, and have that restorative work of play at the same time. We have, um, traditionally, again, rented facilities and so we're really looking forward to the opportunity of having a place that we can put down some roots, beautify a property that we really care about deeply. Um, we grew up in York County, so we're, um, just really fond of this area, bring it back to life, um, and maintain the relationship with the Boy Scouts who traditionally have been the property owners that needed to sell the property. So we're really excited about that opportunity as well.
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, we're just really excited to be here tonight. So thank you for your time and to the warm welcome that we received from so many Acton residents. So thank you for that. We're just really excited, like Morgan said, to, um, hopefully, um, enhance the beauty of this existing historic property and, um, you know, also have a place where many of our campers, traditionally, um, our historic population, 15% of it is within this 25 mile radius of, of York, uh, sorry, of Loon Pond. So we're excited to be able to offer, uh, an, uh, place for mental health, um, in their neighborhood. So, um, so thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight.
And we brought a professional to answer any technical questions.
Good evening. My name's Craig Burgess. I work with Sebago Technics out of South Portland, Maine. So tonight, I know that this isn't a, a traditional approach to your permitting process. Um, we came and I, I reached out to Jason to see if we could get in front of you at a sketch plan level. So before we really dump all the hours into the full design, we really wanted to gain, get your feedback on what you're looking at, the sketch plan here in front of you tonight. We're coming in front of the board. This will be, uh, a small, non-residential, educational, scientific, nature interpretation use. The girls here explained exactly what the intent of this camp is, so it's not a, a traditional camp by any means. We will make use of Camp Nutter to the greatest extent practical. So what, a lot of the trails that are out there will be reused. We'll likely have to just widen, do a little bit of tree clearing along the trails to make a little bit of room for these, the, the cabins to come into the property. The three largest structures on the site will be renovated for the admin office, the arts center and the arts, the nature center and the arts center. There'll be another building that, a larger building on site, which is being designed by Oak Point Associates, and that's the dining hall and community center, which is next to immediately north of the exist, existing amphitheater. You see that kind of central to the site? The amphitheater is, is on the left-hand side of the sheet, um, and closer to Loon Pond. So the dining hall and community center will be within that shoreline overlay district of the property. The, the bulk of this property, the bulk of the development here that you're looking at is within the critical rural district. There, there is a commercial district, thank. There is a, let's see, I can't get this. Okay, thank you.
The, you, you have, the other map shows the.
Don't have it on my computer right now.
Oh, really?
No, I wouldn't, I ran downstairs, thought I might have it.
So the, the amphitheater is right here, the dining hall, community center will be located in this vicinity. And, and this building right here is being designed by Oak Point Associates. The admin office, the art center and the nature center are all three existing buildings on site. There are three bunk houses, um, six bunk houses, I'm sorry, proposed in this area here and the bathhouses on either side. There will be two staff cabins over here as well as a medical center. And this area here, um, is actually gonna be kept in its existing condition for parking. Right now it's like a, a grass gravel parking area. So a lot of these modifications that you see on this plan won't, won't actually happen. It's just gonna be maintained as is for parking. And it accommodates roughly 100 parking spaces plus. And it accommodates roughly 100 parking spaces plus or minus, but that amount of parking won't be needed for this facility by any means. There will also be an additional 10 parking spaces for admin workers over in this area as well as a drop-off loop and drop-off parking here. And all of this will be a paved access walkway to get to the dining hall, community center and arts center. But for the most part, a lot of these existing trails that you see throughout the site will be reused to the greatest extent practical. So the project really doesn't propose a huge impact to this property. For the most part, it's going to take, it's going to take advantage of the existing cleared areas. You can see that there's several recreational areas, a common area here and another recreational area right here. So what the project proposes to really limit the amount of tree clearing, especially within the shoreline zone. There will be a, an engineered subsurface disposal system, and we haven't got into the details of that, but I'm guessing that will be located right around this area because the bathhouses are located right here and it's all downhill to get to that engineered disposal system. The onsite well is located approximately right there. So the camp will make use of that existing well. That well will however have to be classified as a public drinking supply because it will serve more than 25 people, I believe in this type of setting, it's over a six-month period. So it will be classified as a public well as part of this project. So the work that's still involved to take it to this next level is to go through the full civil engineering design effort as well as the design of the subsurface disposal system, the evaluation of that existing well over here. And I don't think that this will require a main DEP permit because we went through the numbers in preparation of this application and I believe that the project will only create about an additional 20,000 square feet of impervious surface. Because we are planning to make use of this parking area and the existing gravel trails. The project is almost completely within the aquifer overlay district. And there are, this whole area here is within the shoreline district associated with Loon Pond.
Sorry.
As part of this project, we're also going to want some access to Loon Pond. There is an existing dock there, but the intent would be that that dock can be expanded with the potential to create like a little swimming area. And I don't know if that, Jason, if that can be handled, if that's handled as part of the planning board review or if that's separate through code enforcement after.
Sorry, bear with me a second, I was just trying to... What may be impaled in your mind of a swimming area?
Like an, probably like an L-shaped dock, so you create a closed-in area where swimmers, it's isolated where they can swim. I don't know.
Yeah, so we can also just have a lifeguard, it's kind of like a roped-off safe area that we can make sure we can like maintain.
Just a designated area, you're not really trying to make a beach or something like that.
No, no, just like it doesn't, we, with a summer camp, there's a lot of like safe health and safety and like a lot of regulations and so obviously we need to have like a buddy system and a lifeguard and we want to make sure that we can kind of say you can't go past this certain point or something along those lines. So nothing too dramatic there, but a place for a lifeguard to kind of go and stand and make sure that the kids are being safe.
The Boy Scouts rope, had a float rope to get off?
Yeah, we'd probably, we'd probably continue to use that because we're trying to reuse as much of the stuff that they left behind as possible, but we are hoping to add like just like a little dock there to have a lifeguard actually out there and be present. They do have a lifeguard stand that the Boy Scouts built that we're going to keep, but just from the Boy Scout summer camp rules and traditional summer camp rules are just a little different when it comes to like needing like lifeguards and things like that, so.
Would it just be a seasonal dock, you take it out of the water?
Yeah, yeah.
What is the import of a public well that you mentioned? What does that, what changes does that drive?
There's really no change there, it's just, it's just a classification of it. So there's really, we'll have to, we'll have to do like a pump test and everything typical to make sure that that well is functioning so that it can serve the camp, but because it serves more than 25 people in that six-month period, it then has to be classified as a public well. So there's like, from the engineered disposal system, that will have a 300-foot setback, so we just need to make sure we meet that setback requirement from the public well and any other wells in the area, but I'm guessing because that's fairly well-centered in the site, we shouldn't have any issues with that. We did just finish the vernal pool assessment out there. There's only one wetland on the property and it's isolated to just this area here and it extends up to 109. And you can see the wetland when you pull down East Shore Road to the, if you're pulling in to the right. So a little bit of knowledge that I learned about that wetland is, we did count significant, we did count significant egg masses in it, however, because it's not a natural occurring, the culvert under 109 is actually fully plugged right now. And that's causing water to back up way into the site, so it's, it's not a natural vernal pool or it's, it's right now, it's about three feet deep because it's fully backed up. And if you go onto the opposite side, at the north side of 109, you can see flowing water, but you can't find the culvert. And we poked in there looking for the culvert, but it's nowhere to be found. So because it's not a natural vernal pool, it doesn't meet that significant classification, so there's no setbacks or buffering requirements associated with it. So there will be no wetland impact associated with this project.
And you're not really planning to do much in that area, are you?
No, no, everything's, yeah, 109's, this, this sketch right here that you're looking at on the screen, that's about half of the site. Yeah, so the other, the other half extends up to 109 and that will be really not even touched as part of this project.
Yeah, we really wanted to maintain the buffer and from 109 and Iron Tales and then also make it feel like summer camp, so we're trying to keep as much, as many trees and natural things that are happening there, so that's kind of why we chose to bring, well, and to use the existing trails. But that was the reason why everything's there, to kind of create this cozy little bubble of a safe community for the kiddos.
I'm done, wait, I'm sorry.
My weekly salary?
Cash, I like.
How many bunks in the bunk cabins?
So each cabin will sleep 12, so six bunk beds is the goal with two adults kind of behind a thin, very paper-thin wall, but so there's like a bunk cabin for an adult, for chaperones, and then like six bunk beds, so that moocs would be 12 in each of those bunks. And then there's six bathrooms in each of the bathhouses, which I know you didn't ask, but that's what that is.
I'm not sure if we've addressed this already, but I don't think, it's not a summer-long program where we, like those bunk houses won't be full of campers all summer long. So, yeah.
What is the, what's your anticipated usage?
So probably, so our traditional flagship programming, which is the summer camp model, is a week-long. We hope to extend to two weeks, but it's a free, it's a free program for kids to come and it's pretty expensive to run a camp for 75, well, 70 to 75 kids. So we can afford one week right now, our goal is to get up to two and then expand our programming a little bit by like letting like-minded organizations potentially use the property, but not in the same model. So like the Center for Grieving Children could come and do like an afternoon, the Boy Scouts would use it for, like they use it a couple of times a year, that kind of stuff would still maintain on the property. So almost like a little hub for the community could access it, but our traditional model, we just can't afford to do much more than that. But our goal would be to do two weeks in our model. But then also doing some resilience retreats, which are for family survivors, that potentially they would just take one cabin and do like a weekend with like a one-on-one therapist or something, but not the full property. So is that what you wanted me to say? You tapped my mic.
So before we do dive into the full design, do you have any feedback, anything that you see that you're questioning that may not technically meet the standards of the ordinance? You can see that within the shoreline overlay, there is, it's fairly well minimized the amount of disturbance.
That, that thin blue line to the left of the dining hall, the shoreline overlay line?
Where is it? This right here?
Yeah.
Probably, huh?
Yeah, that line right there is... And that will be more clear, so as part, for this project, we'll create a full plan set.
Right, because this plan here, I don't see the dining hall on it.
The dining hall is...
Oh, I'm looking at this one.
He was looking at a different map.
Oh, the corner post survey is the existing conditions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that one just shows the, the zone clearly, that's why I was looking at that one. We'll get more into that. I do have a question about the parcels 1A, 1B, parcel 3 and whatever you refer to, this orange area over here as well, like you see these are all pieces that are going to be deeded to someone else. Like I think one is going to be remaining with the Boy Scouts?
No, the whole...
How does that work though?
The whole parcel's ours.
Those parcels would be merged to be one.
Oh, these are going to be merged?
Yes, yes, that will all be one parcel for this project.
Okay.
Yeah, I think with the actual application, we'd want to see that deed.
Okay.
There are some deeds in there.
He's got to write a...
It's a lease, right? So we want to see the deed to make sure they'll, they'll...
As far as I can tell, it looks like four different areas.
Yeah.
But there's also this funny orange area up here, which must...
I'm fairly confident that's already been done, I'll reach out to Corner Post Land Surveying, who is the company that completed this survey.
Can I get you, not obviously today, but just send me everything electronically so I can throw it on the ground?
This is the orange piece you're talking about here?
And you might have already, but I couldn't find it, I ran down to try to find it, I just didn't have enough time.
I can do that.
Here? Or something we could discuss. Jason, where did you see this falling onto the land use chart?
On the, we had a discussion with him and I re-agreed that it was the, for education and... Yeah, small residential facilities for educational, scientific or nature interpret, uh, interpretation purposes, interpretation purposes, sorry, I'm not reading that. There's, other than that, there's really nothing in here other than for, it would be a campground, which I didn't classify this a campground.
Well, I guess it could be both.
It could, well, it is, but I went more towards the, for educational and scientific purposes, I mean, health purposes too, it's, I would go with that, but, you know, because it's more of a healing center, I would think and...
Yeah, and we're not like renting the cabins for like money or it's not like mom and pop can like go rent a cabin for 20 bucks or something like that, so.
With our land use chart, that was the closest I could get to what I thought that this actually meant.
Yeah, and with the Boy Scouts continuing to use it and we actually do a ton of nature programming, that's like a big piece of it, because there's a lot of research on mental health and being one with nature and mushroom hikes and fishing and just sort of like that normal, normal stuff is like really tied into our restorative program, because basically our model, not that you need to get into it, but our model is that if you only focus on grief work, you can't really, it's a sailboat. So if you only focus on grief work, you're kind of spinning and if you're only ignoring the grief and doing the fun stuff, you're spinning the other direction. And so we really try to teach our kids that it's okay to have fun and we do that with nature and learning to canoe and fish and all of that stuff. And then we also do your grief work and that's what the program cabins are for, where we teach you coping skills and life skills of like, suicide will always be a part of you and we try to teach them that, you know, grief doesn't get easier, but we hope to give you the tools to make it a little, you stronger so you can carry your backpack through life and we'll always be here for you. And that's really the goal of this property is so, historically, kids haven't been able to go back to where they were the year before because we rent and so we're really looking forward for them to feel like this is a place that they feel safe at.
So these campers are sometimes reoccurring?
Yeah, about 60% of our campers return year over year. And then when they age out, they come back as staff because they love it so much. We're volunteers because we don't pay anybody. We actually had a few campers that are Loon Pond residents as well, so they're really excited that they're already part of the community.
Did you ask that question about the shoreline zone because of the buildings being in it? The proposed buildings?
Yeah, well, and I just, I couldn't see the dining hall on this map, so I was just trying to pin down where it was going to be in, you know, if it was going to be in the shoreline zone, which it's going to have to be hacked.
Yeah?
Yeah, it's in the shoreline zone, it's on the upper, upper fringe of that zone. But...
And same with the, like the administration office and just trying, you know, as we go through the process, we'll get a better idea for...
Yeah, that's an existing...
That's existing, the administration, it's there.
Everything that we see on the map and the screen is existing.
No, 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 no.
So the admin building here is existing, the arts center here, and then the nature center.
Is that a new entrance on East Shore Drive right there?
It's, it is an entrance there, but it's not up to scale as what this is doing, right?
So there is going to be quite a bit of paving and parking in the shoreline zone in that area.
That's what I see too.
I see a lot of paving in the shoreline zone right there. Yeah, okay.
We are trying to make, I don't know, oh, trying to make it ADA compliant, so if we have a kid in a wheelchair or something, we can make them have access, but we're trying to make it as, as cost-effective as possible, so doing as limited asphalt or anything as, and so that's why we're maintaining the existing parking and as grass and things like that, but we do want to have, you know, if, if we needed wheelchair access to have them come in, so that's why just limited.
So a lot of this area here is fairly well open.
Yeah.
There will be some tree clearing right in this area here, but for the most part, this whole, this area is almost like that front area when you pull into the site. This is where there's a, there's a large open area here, so we will do our best to minimize the amount of clearing and grading associated with that, with this turnaround and parking area.
Yeah, that's that green building you see right, kind of when you drive, it's like the first thing you see when you get on East Shore right at the end is that.
I believe this line right here is your 100-foot setback, so it's all greater than 100 feet from Loon Pond.
That admin office down there is existing?
Yes.
That's the reason you're bringing all that down to that building is to use it as a setback?
Yeah, the drive, the entrance is already there and the building's nice, we just need to, the inside's bright yellow, so we'll probably paint that, but...
You know, they do make the pavement, that is coarse.
Gavin, what do you find in this land use chart?
Oh, well, I was just, just looking to see where it was, I mean, I think that makes sense, I wanted to see if it was a...
Something different?
If it was a campground, but the way I look at the definition of a campground, it has, a fee is charged, so. I mean, if you're not charging the campers...
No, yeah, I mean...
Not a camp, I mean...
Usually they lose their financial or big financial contributor, so we tried to take away that immediately by just making it free for everybody.
I'm not sure what, you know, seems to make sense.
The amount of actual clearing, this... The amount of actual clearing disturbance along Lunepon is really going to be fairly minimal. At this point, I don't anticipate that we'll even need to submit a main DEP permit by rule, just because we're really not getting into any of that area for this project.
Had you considered using the art center as the administration building? Just to allow for that turnaround area to be maybe further from the lake or...
We could certainly explore that if, if it's not preferred at this location, I just know that this area right here is fairly clear now, and it's, it's, it's where the people currently go when they enter into this.
There's like a flagpole there and a stone monument, that's, that's kind of there, so it feels like your entrance.
We'll take a look at it, yeah, I just, I mean, these are just...
Of course, yeah.
First, first observation.
Anything that could also save the project money is always worth exploring.
I think as, it's been a couple weeks since I went to the site, but I think that there's some steeper slopes in here that would make, might make it difficult to move that into this area.
Yeah.
Just generally slopes down towards where you've got the circle, I don't think it's, it's very steep. I mean, the whole property slopes down towards...
It definitely slopes, it slopes down, and this is a wide, not a wide open, but a clear flatter area.
Does anyone use this upper entrance for the old parking area?
It's certainly accessible, yeah, it's just, we just didn't want to have to pave all of that to make that sort of...
You can come, you can access it as you're coming down at the beginning of East Shore, and then...
Sometimes I exit that way.
Yeah, you can, you can access that from East Shore Drive right over in this area, and then it connects, it connects back over to the front admin office area.
Oops.
Oh, it's touchscreen. Might not print in color, but...
No, wait, this is my, they make me use my own computer, or I...
What we can do is we can take a, I can take a closer look at the slopes in this area, and if, if I can push this a little bit this way to... I, I will, but you, this yellow right here indicates steeper side slope, so it would just get into more excavation if further north we push that.
So this area in green, 51, 49 and 51, is written for, I guess, the parking spaces? That's the number, so up in that area, that's not flat as well, that's still sloping?
No, that's, that's pretty, that's pretty flat in that area.
So the drop-off experience, I'll just, parents don't traditionally like park and stay, they're, they're kind, we're kind of like dropping their, they're dropping their kid off, they say bye, and then they leave, so that's kind of why it, it's more of like a welcoming experience, where you like, you see your admin, you know where you're kind of dropping your kiddo off, and we, last year with, with COVID, we did 15-minute scheduled, and it was really smooth and really nice, and so every 15 minutes, like, you had to schedule your timing, so I'd like to maintain that, because it was really organized, but that, it's, they don't park and kind of stay there, it's kind of like you get in and you're out, you're in and you're out, and so that's kind of the, the thought process of, of that, as well as in case of an emergency, having a way for an ambulance to really easily be able to get in on site, and that's the thought process behind that, but...
Really what we're looking at, I think, is the paved area being close, being close to the lake and opposed to further away, that's...
Is there another material that's like, wheelchairs can... We can look into like that.
Yeah, we, we can look into, try to move that area, look maybe into this area over here, if, if that's...
That way we'd be behind that 250-foot line that we were looking at. Does everything off pavement goes this way toward the lake? And, you know, it's, it's vehicles, it's oil, it's pavement?
Makes sense.
Water heats up.
That's, that's the only question that I have.
So this is the 100 right here, this dotted line?
Yes. I guess one of the alternatives you may be looking at for that, instead of using...
Yeah.
She brought up a good point, when it gets hot in summer, you know, and there's going to be an open area, that pavement gets hot, that water hits that, it heats up, that drains into the lake at a higher temperature. You're basically changing the conditions of the lake.
Yeah.
So that's kind of the reason we have to have, so if there is an alternative, you know, like, I don't know, something else to, something other than pavement, just for that area where you're down near the, near the water.
Yeah.
If you get considering those alternatives, or see what may or may not be feasible.
Yeah, absolutely.
Would appreciate it.
For sure.
Something to consider, just, you know, early on, you asked us if we had any...
Yes, stone dust sounds cheaper than pavement too, so...
That's a big concern here, is because all that does have an effect, and you know how hot pavement is.
Yeah.
Water hits it, you start changing the water temperature, down below, you start changing the whole makeup of the lake.
John's been complaining about the coldness of the water for a while.
Coldness doesn't cool down.
The porous pavement, that, that costs a lot, and it takes a lot to maintain that, that type of pavement.
I just noticed that when I was in college, they were talking about out west in Colorado and stuff like that, where they have all the flat land to run off, it was a concern for parents and people, including people from Nevada, it rains a lot in Nevada, but it never hits the ground, so when it does, they want it to go into the ground, you know, in big cities, you're diverting the water, you're not stopping it, you're moving it somewhere else, which is changing other environments.
I, I think what we could do, we could, we could certainly move this maybe a little bit up, we could look at where the water, when it drains this way, it could get into a very shallow infiltration trench, or add some additional plantings there that can help absorb that runoff.
Well, even, even if, yeah, you had something more porous soil where it would absorb in and not run right into the lake, or something like that.
This site, the soils are very good out here, they're all very sandy soils, they're Colton and Adam, which are great soils.
Everybody out there's got a point well, because it's...
Yeah.
Probably a 20-foot stick in the ground, suck. That would be a good consideration, because, yeah, because then it could, even on these gully washes that would get once in a while, that water wouldn't just flow right off that pigment and wash out anything, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, anything you could do to...
Some erosion control measurements, that's all.
Yeah, we can make it a science experiment for the kids, figure this out.
Free labor.
So something else that you could look into, for boat ramps, they have these cells, like egg cartons-like cells that you put gravel into and, and on the boat ramp, those don't move.
I do that for mud for the goats at home, so I know exactly what you're talking about.
But that's an alternative.
So I think that we'll be trying to come back in front of you in about two months or so, once we have enough time to get through the full design and do enough exploit, exploration out in this area for the subsurface disposal system, so there's still a little bit of work left, and I anticipate around two months or so.
Your goal is to use it this summer?
Not this summer, our goal, it's aspirational, is 2023, probably August of 2023, and so the health board, like, to get your permits for summer camp is, also, like, we have to have everything in place, and they have to come and make sure we had, like, a medical director approve that we have the right supplies and all of that stuff, so we're hoping for August of 2023, but if we can't make it, then we'll suck it up and do 2024, but... 2023 is our 10-year anniversary, so we really like that story.
Worse process than this one.
It's, yeah.
Happy we don't have to go to DEP for this, DEP is a long process these days. Are there any other comments?
The, you know, one of the considerations for moving that up a little, is it possible, are you square foot limited, to flip-flop the art center and the receiving place, the admin?
From a programming perspective, no, we just, the art center's cuter on the inside, it's... So that felt like that should be more for children, but that's, no, there's no restriction as far as of programming, like a function, those buildings are existing, so just the existing building that we're calling the admin office now is, it's, it needs the most work, and so that's why we were going to just kind of have that be the place for adults to like, for us to answer the phones and not have kids go, whereas the existing, what we're calling the art center, has a cute little, it looks like a camp, it has like a stone fireplace and all of the Boy Scout, you know, plaques and stuff.
The sidewalk could just extend a little bit further to that building, if we, if, when moving that further this way, so it'll just be a little bit of a longer sidewalk to get to that building. Well, we really appreciate your feedback and taking the time to listen to us tonight. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you get enough out of them?
Nothing else, right?
Nope, nice change of speed though, huh?
Good job!
Training next week.
Uh, yeah, so next week we have, he, Southern Maine Planning and Development is going to come back in for any follow-up questions, so if you guys can think of some stuff that you took out of that last meeting that you'd like to have, you'd like to revisit, that'd be great. It doesn't have to be a long meeting, just, you know, I just wanted to have them come back again, just for any kind of follow-up and, and, you know, just, just things.
Do you have more questions for them?
I'll put some together.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll put a list of stuff together, I know Chris had come up with a couple, I told him to write them down, but I'm probably sure he didn't write them down.
No, I just remembered to write it down, actually. Can you give us an update on what's going on at the legislature, with that new bill?
Yeah.
I've been trying to follow it, but they're going through so much emergency session, right? They're just, they're just pushing stuff through like... We were talking about, John and I were talking about the sidewalk on the 30th.
Yes.
And weren't we waiting on answers from them, well, we actually scheduled it to...
To get the Vernal Pool.
May get more report.
Yeah, we want to get things surveyed on the ground, so we know what we're looking at.
Right.
So I, I don't like... There's a kind of that weird pinch point between the resource protection and the potential Vernal Pool, where they want to put the road and excavate partially in the, potentially in the resource protection zone, and that whole area, I don't know if it's right here or if it's here, if it's not surveyed.
I have some emails, give me a second, I'll tell you what I had got for a response.
Genetic date, wasn't it?
Yeah, pretty much, I mean, he...
He's pushing, he's trying to, he just wants to get it, the ball moving is all, you know, pretty much, so he's really just pushing to, to get, to, everything to go forward.
But I think we only want to...
It's not ready, it's not ready.
Yeah, exactly, no, yeah, I'm not saying anything.
We kind of told him that, we, like, if you don't have it ready, we're not going to go.
Yeah.
Well...
I know it's a big spider, huh?
Get him!
No, don't kill him, you gotta get him off the table and tell him to go.
Put him on a chair, you know.
Oh, good spider.
Yeah, just bear with me, I do have an email here, and I will...
Because if, if it's not ready now, it's not going to be ready in nine days.
Uh, they, oh, right here.
I don't know, I don't really know how many areas they're surveying in there, if they're just surveying the Vernal Pools that are going to be affected by the development or by the extraction, or if they're looking at ones that are in the Three Rivers Atlanta Trust area, or...
Should be looking at all of them.
Well, I don't, I don't know, that's an awful lot of wetlands for them to map in a hundred, whatever it was, a hundred...
400 something acres out there.
Yeah.
Dust can travel.
Worry, but I don't know if we're gonna, I don't know, I don't know how much they're surveying, so I would, I don't honestly think they'll be ready, but I don't know.
There's a bunch of, that one Vernal Pool down by the, by the road is flagged out right now. I did go by there the other day, it's all flagged, I don't know, I, I, I might have put the email in his folder, which I can't access this from this computer.
We can find out next week.
Yeah, I will have everything for you, I'll give you some better information, I'll definitely get that for you for, for next Thursday.
I guess the worst case, we can cancel it. Yeah, we should know by Thursday whether Saturday's ago or not.
And like I said, though, that property is going to be so big, I mean, there might be a section that we can look at, because, you know, I'm not saying...
We, we as a board should decide what we want to look at too, because last time I did a, one of these sidewalks with Pep, and we just, we were just in Dave's truck, and he just drove around and showed us what he want, what we could see from the road, and it was...
Yeah.
All right, but it...
This is a big property, so I don't know.
Decide what we wanted to, that would at least direct the sidewalk.
All right, all right.
Building map though.
Yeah.
State though, not map though. Vernal, something else you wanted.
The wash plant area, I was kind of curious where the three ponds were going to be and where the Aquifer Protection Line was, I wanted to get that on the ground, because it's fairly close to the wash plant location, and then it goes on the West Shore Drive side, that, a lot of it is in the Aquifer Protection District, but, I mean, it just gives us a reference when we're there, but I don't know how, how important it ends up being in the end, because we approved the map, but it's, I mean, just gives us something to look at. That would probably take them a little while to map that Aquifer Protection.
I'll reach out, and I don't have, I can't find it on my, my emails right, right now.
We'll know by Thursday whether it was Saturday, right?
He said he had a big portion of it done, but there might be some more that couldn't be done for the following week, it would definitely all be, be done by the 10th, I believe is what he had said. I'll, I'll, I'm just going off of what I'm trying to remember right now.
And do we want the written reports?
That's what it was.
Before the sidewalk, or do we not mind that?
I think that's what he had said, you know, he, everything should be done by the sidewalk, but it might not, you might not have something in hand.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, that takes time to map it all out and do all that stuff, so I'll...
It's got to be done.
Yeah.
It's got to be done, and it would be helpful for the sidewalk.
I'll, um... I will reach out tomorrow.
The sidewalk out to whenever...
Yeah.
Whenever they're ready, I guess.
Yeah, we'll just see what happens.
Uh, my biggest thing is just, I don't know if there's a timeframe to cancel the sidewalk, because it's public notice right now, it's on, it's online and been passed out. Yeah, yeah, it has to be.
It's out there.
It had, it has to be out there, we have to give the butters, and, you know, everybody needs to be known about it, and you have, it's like, what, 14 days or 10 days or something like that, so it would have had to have been today.
It was right on the...
By the minimum. Yeah, not even today, before then, before today, it would have had been done... Not even today, before then, before today, it would have had been done last week, so I'll reach out anyway and, and find out where they are.
Yeah.
Um, I can, if you guys, if you guys wanna pay attention to your emails, I'll send something out, I know Gavin, you don't, so we'll leave you a call, um, but no decisions can be, I, I don't know how that really, I mean, I'll just.
Well, I think we can cancel it anyways, because if the weather's bad, we're not gonna be humping through the rain and stuff. Do you have to have a ten-day notification before you do the sidewalk?
Yeah, probably, cause, cause so that the butters can go, I don't know, that would apply to cancellation.
Yeah, if, you know.
To be anything, you know, where, we're gonna have a sidewalk, we're just not sure what date it's gonna be on, you tell the subject people that it's there, but you haven't set a confirmed date to be announced. Yeah, I don't think you can do that, I think you have to. No, because this is all the out there, when I looked online.
Yeah, we already scheduled it, I guess, but we can also do a second sidewalk.
Yeah, and I kinda figured that, I, I figured with the size of this, two walks might have been something that.
This side one time.
To the West Shore Drive the other time.
One time.
I mean, he's got a, a total of five hundred acres, and there's a pit here, a pit here, and a pit.
Yeah.
There's multiple plots, and then so you have Vernal Pools throughout this, so I mean, to, to walk this property, I know it's been cut, it's gonna be, it'll take some time, so we do the sidewalk.
That's even more reason.
Right, so you have, you can go to point it, yeah, I'm with you, John, we're not against you.
Look, we're getting old, we don't wanna walk, like, all this time.
Should we bring the fibula, the fibulator thingy for you?
Yeah. There you go, Nitro, slapping those bad boys, we'll go.
We spare water, we dump.
Right. That was just on my mind, cause I know it's creeping up and.
Yeah, well, that's pretty much the, the next thing, right, cause next week's just training.
I made an auto writing down the questions, but I had other things on my mind too.
Yeah, what are those? Bet you can't even remember them right now.
Not right now. Oh, yeah, it was, but if we, one person wanted to table something, the next meeting, if someone didn't have enough info, could.
Yeah.
Say Gavin wanted to make a motion to table, that was one of the questions, see?
Write it down.
That was in there.
Yeah.
About the difference between tabling and postponing.
Right, right. Yeah, tabling, it seems like you're more just like.
Yeah, they're more to tabling than postponing.
Right, right.
Cause some actions actually take it off the table. Right, yeah, it was weird. Nope. I make a motion that we.
We're doing the talk.
Oh, Iron Tales.
Oh, I, you get that yet?
No, I do have the thing, I do have the thing, and I didn't bring it up today because I wanted to, uh, get that signature block.
Oh, so we still waiting for the final map?
So just bear with me on that one, I do have it.
Did you drag up the minutes from, uh?
No, uh, we had talked about it, but I don't think we had.
Different sets of minutes.
Uh, yeah.
I think it's at least two sets of minutes that we're gonna want, because I honestly don't remember all the conditions that we set on it.
I'm gonna get the minutes, and I'm also gonna talk to, see if I can get Greg in here too, it's his, it's his plan, so.
Yeah.
If you have any questions.
We're not supposed to discuss it unless he's here, right?
Right.
Yeah, so.
I mean, we could sign it, but.
Well, that's kinda, yeah, I don't know where you guys left off with it, so I wouldn't.
We just waited on that, was the big part.
I'll reach out to.
Yeah, but I.
Mr. Martinez.
We have him come in the next meeting.
The, the map that Jason showed me had a lot of parking on it.
Right.
Ridiculous amount.
Not the training meeting, but.
If we should be concerned with that.
We can drag him in on the next meeting, if there's nothing.
I should have asked about a fence.
We need to see the minutes and see what we did.
Yeah, absolutely, and I remember it was kind of loose.
You get that?
It wasn't the tightest.
Did we talk about, did I talk about that with you or no?
Uh, a long while ago.
When we approved it, it was kinda.
Like, last week?
No, like way before.
No.
But, yeah, yeah.
We gotta pull on the minutes, I thought it was you, maybe it was Chris.
Is that Mike?
Yeah, it was like in between.
Yeah, no, not in recent weeks.
The other mic?
No, it would have been last week.
No.
I thought it was you, but.
Wasn't Kenneth.
No.
The one on the phone? Yeah, we had two mics. You didn't have one, you're using, uh, checklet, weren't you?
Right, right, exactly, I think it was.
Um, so I'll try to get him in here for, um, the next, next scheduled meeting, um, with.
What do you wanna review?
With the site plan.
I'd love to get the minutes.
Yeah, let's, let's, yeah, let's review the minutes at the next meeting, and then we'll determine, do we need him to come in? So it'd be the end of May, the second meeting of May, right?
Get the, uh, drawing up here for the next meeting, so that we can kind of have one.
I can go grab it right now if you wanna look at it, but I don't have the minutes.
Yeah, no, that's all right, it's no rush on it, just, we've already.
It's been a year.
Yeah, it's been a year already, but.
Yeah.
You said he has other work that he wants to do in there too.
He has proposing other stuff for future, and he, he is a.
Maybe not this year.
Yeah, I'm not, I wouldn't get into it right now, but, uh, I'm supposed to or not.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Not yet. Make a motion that we adjourn? Second. Second. Call him, David. All right.
It's been the first Thursday in a long time.